I think he says we're coming on TV. Ready, Frank John? What's that mean?
Means he's ready.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for coming to City Council meeting tonight. We just finished the Board of Works meeting. It was lengthy. We're going to have an invocation. And before we have the invocation, I invite you to participate. But if you don't want to participate, it's fine. We asked people of our own community and other communities if they'd like to come and do the invocation. We open it up to all religious creeds. And if you have come here to discuss something, whether or not you participate in the invitation, invocation will not have any bearing on what we're doing. Too many of those invocations in that speech. But tonight, we're going to stand. And Councilwoman Connie Rish is going to lead us in the question.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing. We have Reverend Nor tonight to ask the invocation. Go ahead.
May we bow our heads. Dear God, in this very crowded chamber, as we look around, we see a variety of roles represented: elected city officials, concerned citizens, media, a wide variety of occupations and professions in our community. But above all of this diversity, we all share one common trait: you created all of us to be stewards, stewards of our lives. I'm thinking in particular, good stewards of our brains, to use our brains to think, to reason, to converse, to make intelligent decisions for the betterment of our community. So Father, for all of us here this evening, during this meeting, may we all be faithful stewards of the priceless gift of our minds you have given us. In your son's name, we offer you this prayer. Amen.
We'd ask everybody to put their phone on vibrate or turn it off so we have those taken care of. And first item of business will be roll call.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilwoman Weber.
Present.
Councilwoman Shomel.
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Here.
Councilwoman Creech.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Here.
Look, the record shows that all seven council people are here, and we have a form, and we can do business. Reading of the minutes of the last council meeting.
How do we accept the minutes as presented?
We have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as they were presented to the council people by hand delivery. Any discussion? Any corrections? All in favor, say aye. Any appeal? Motion carried. First item of business, Park Superintendent, to introduce Girl Scout. Mike.
Hello. I have a special guest today, eighth grader Kaylee Brier and her grandmother Kathy. She's a Girl Scout and trying to earn some of her badges by helping better the community. She's working right now on her Silver Award, and she'd like to talk to her a little bit about that, your project. She's very nervous, so I'll go into her.
Don't be nervous. I'm the one that's nervous. They're all looking at me, aren't you? Talk real loud, will you? Because we want to get you on the mic and everybody to hear you.
She bought a window at the Roberts Building. And you can read that for me. Just tell what you did.
I had a bake sale, and I passed out flyers telling people about my project with the picture of the building on it. This award is earned by making people aware there is something for need, a need for something.
You bought a window?
Yes, she paid for a window by selling at a yard sale. She had a bake sale. She sold at a party, a Cincy party. And then she took money out of her Girl Scout account to pay for a window, the $500 window.
That's great. When did she do this?
We started in September, and we finished paying it at the end of December.
Well, we're really proud of you. Melissa, yes. Melissa, let's have the president of our council. Gary, will you go around there and pin a bicentennial pin?
Yeah, I would love to.
We need all citizens. You're going to make a wonderful citizen.
You are.
Did this idea, did this idea come from any specific thing? Did, I mean, you just, you heard they were raising money for windows, so you decided to make that your project? That's good.
Don't hurt.
Don't hurt. Dr. Weber's a dentist, but he's also president of the council.
I also learned that she earned her Bronze Award by making blankets for Everton Glenwood Carsville Fire Departments to have when they go on fire runs. She did that when she was in sixth grade.
Wow. Very good. Wow. I'd like for you to turn around. Go ahead. I think the paper would like to get a picture, Mike. Boy, isn't that great?
And Mike Herney would be on a plaque, right? At the window.
Yeah. Thank you so much for what you've done, hon.
Very nice.
And when we have that dedication up there, we'll be sure to invite you to speak then.
She'll be excited about that.
What'd you say, eighth grade? That's pretty good.
That was nice.
Mike wanted to do that at the beginning of the meeting so she wouldn't have to sit here and listen to all of what Mike wants. I'm going to move a couple of things. Connie has to leave because she has a very important date with her son that has to be done tonight. Gabe has been sick all day. He agreed to come down so we can have a full council. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the pending ordinance 2989, and that is an ordinance where the Riverboat money would be spent, $62,000, to finish the 4-H building. In order to do that, we had permission last time to advertise for a public hearing. So at this time, I open a public hearing. That's you folks, public. Is there anybody particular that wants to speak tonight for or against? Don't be afraid. You want to speak first? I'll be in a preacher.
I am not speaking as a preacher. I am speaking as, well, a student of history, as a lover of old buildings, as an avid preservationist. First, a couple of comments on history. I proudly have in my hands, this is personal history. In 1983, my wife designed and did this cross stitch on the city of Connersville and won the grand champion in the Roberts Building. It's in the room, as you walk up the stairs, the right where that big conference table is. So I will be very candid when I think of the Roberts Building, 30, without thinking back 30 years ago, when my wife won the grand champion medal ribbon for this. To broaden history, when our country went through the Great Depression, one of the many programs that Frank Delano Roosevelt instituted was the Works Progress Administration. The Roberts Building is a WPA project. In a way, our community is honored to have such an historic building in our community. We'll make no bones about the fact that I am 150% in favor of having that building restored. Again, no reflection upon any of you here, the thinking of the Visteon Building and other economic development projects that have been frustrating to try to get them going. Our community psychologically needs a success, a victory. And by finishing the Roberts Building, to me, would provide us, not on the magnitude of selling the Visteon Building and bringing 2,000 to 3,000 employees to Connersville, but it would be something that we can look at as citizens of Connersville. And I'm not talking Republicans, Democrats. I'm talking about citizens of our community and see a success. My last comment, the three years I was paid to play at the Huddleston Farmhouse, I had the unmitigated joy of hiring impersonators of Lincoln, Lee, Grant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to do programs at Huddleston. I closed my eyes, the prospects in the Roberts Building of doing historic-type programs blows my mind. And I'm talking about bringing people into the building, people paying money to attend programs. Now, not on the scale of helping having the Visteon Building full of workers, but this to me would be a tremendous step up for the city of Connersville. So not as a Republican, not as a Democrat. I'm a devout independent. I urge all of you to vote yes to provide the remaining amount of money to finish the Roberts Building. Thank you.
Who wants to speak? Donna?
Okay, I'm going to outdo Reverend Nor.
Go ahead.
Fifty years ago, when I was in 4-H, I specifically remember three things. I remember making some yeast rolls that my mother said were the most horrible things she had ever eaten, and I got grand champion. We never could figure that out. I'm sure that judge was going to home and die after she ate that whole roll. I remember getting grand champion on food preservation. And the other day, Leonard told me to go up on the stage and just look out. And I said, "That's old hat for me. I did that 50 years ago in the dress review." And we did always put our 4-H projects there. And my mother won grand champion with a beautiful quilt that I think she was more proud of than she was me, actually. She, I think she treasured it more, but that's okay. And my dad worked on the WPA, and so he worked in that park and helped make it what it is. And so I just, I want to ask you to support this project because, like Reverend Nor, I see this as something that we can build on and continue to use that building for what it was intended. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else would like to speak tonight? Give us your name and where you live.
Kathy Doyle Sturgeon, and I do live one mile across the county line, but Connersville's still my home. I can beat Donna. I was on that stage also in 19, am I giving my age here? Well, anyway, 52 years ago, and won champion with my apron at the dress review. And then I grew up one food preservation, it's probably Donna that beat me out because I got reserved grand champion. And I got it by picking berries in EB's Woods, which we lived up on 30th Street Hill. And one of my favorite things to do was we'd ride down our bikes from the hill when we got done with our chores in the morning in the garden, and we'd go down and we'd rest by the Roberts Park Building, the Roberts Building, before we went on over to the pool where we were able to swim. And I had, there were five of us that would do that every day on our bikes. Four of them were my brothers and sisters, and then another girl. But the Roberts Building always meant a great deal to me, and I know that it did to many others. And I was in there not too long ago with Mike and watching the vocational school students working on it. And it benefited them, it benefits the community, and it's another place where many of us, old timers, have lots of good memories. So I would appreciate if you would consider refunding so that it's there for. And I also read where it was on the endangered list of historic places. And I would like to take that off the endangered list. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak? Yes. Just state your name and where you live.
My name is Barb Quante, and I actually don't live inside the city of Connersville. I'm a county person, and I'm not a native Hoover or a native Connersville person, but I moved here in 1986, and it's been my home since then. I was lucky enough back then to get a job as a head start instructor, and been working with children off and on most of my life. But we looked for a place where we could bring several instructors groups together as to have outings for children. And what we found was head starts rules where they had to be, non-denominational, a lot of different rules that had to be. And we found that the Roberts Building felt fit that bill, and we were able to meet in the basement. And those of you that know that cement wall, having a lot of children down there that were younger than school age, it was a challenge on noise level, but it was great to have that place. I also went on to have a self-esteem seminar for young women there and had fashion shows, just basically trying to get young women to feel better about themselves. And that was back when Fashion Bud and J.C. Penney were very active in those roles. So as someone who wasn't from this community but has made this her home, I would love to see that building to be able to still be the asset it can be. And I know these folks that have that memory of childhood, that we need to bring those memories, like that young Girl Scout that was in here, to fruition. And I'd hate to see that project stop where it is now.
State your name and where you come from.
Good evening. My name is Joe Frost. I'm a community preservation specialist with Indiana Landmarks. I don't reside within the city, but from Cambridge City, which is home to Indiana Landmarks' Eastern Regional Office. We do historic preservation advocacy within 13 counties here in east central Indiana. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I'm hearing a lot about the past, which is all great because that's what got us here. But that building's not really about the past anymore. It's about the future. Historic preservation is more than just old buildings. It's more than just preserving old building materials. It's about preserving communities. It's about preserving building materials so we don't waste them. It's the ultimate recycling. It's about preserving the spirit of those memories and the spirit of that nostalgia which gets us to this point. But most importantly, it's about the community. The Roberts Building is significant for a number of reasons. Some of those have already been mentioned, the local connection, the local memories that have been made. But it's also significant because of the WPA. It was built in a time where although we are experiencing economic hardship, it was built in a time where there was even more economic hardship. And it was built in a time where things were built better than they are today, even with modern technology. The building is solid. In fact, an example of how solid the building is, under the hardwood floors that you see, the subfloor is not the standard plywood that we use today that will only last maybe 50 years. It's actually dimensional lumber laid at a diagonal so that the building is more rigid and overbuilt, if you will, because it was built in a time where skilled craftsmen were able to create amazing products with the wonderful building materials that they had available. It would be nearly impossible to build an exact replica of that building today with current building materials the way they are. For lack of a better term, current building materials are cheap compared to what they were using in the 1930s, even during the greatest economic hardship in the history of the world. So the building is significant for a number of reasons, and I urge the council this evening to refund the project, to continue to fund this project, because it's not just for the park, it's not just for the community, it's for everyone. It's for the Girl Scouts, it's for the memories, it's for the future. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and please consider to fund the Roberts Park project. Thank you.
Sir, have you seen the building?
I have, yeah. And I've actually, for the past year or so, I'm kind of a new kid on the block, so to speak. I've had an opportunity to work very closely with the Connersville Historic Preservation Commission, and I've been able to see the building in various states today, or to date. When I first saw it, it looked rough. And I saw it just a couple weeks ago, and it looks amazing. There's paint on the walls, there's actually walls now, there's drywall that's been put up, there's, you know, modern contemporary lighting that's been installed. And it's really been done on a shoestring budget. You know, Mike's staff at the park have been able to create a wonderful building out of that old building. And I understand some of the students, local students, were able to learn a little bit as well. So it would be, it's critical that the project moves forward, and we see it through fruition because, you know, it's a great way to celebrate the community and a great way to celebrate the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak? This is a public hearing, and if you are against it or if you have a different view, I urge you to stand up and tell us. We want to be open to the public. And I think probably the easiest way to handle this is, and don't be ashamed, but how many of you are in favor tonight of restoring the building? If you'll raise your right hand and keep it up for a few minutes. Let's the council see. Okay, if you'll put them down. Are there anybody here that is in favor of stopping the project and not moving forward? Any at all? I think that's easier than Connie's got a thing to go to, Gabe's sick, and I don't want, I'd love for you all to speak, but if it's okay with you, I think we've had enough public hearing. I think the views are known, and that's what a public hearing is for. Am I okay with that, Mr. Baker?
You are.
Move forward.
Right.
So with your permission, I'm going to move forward and let the council consider this. I'll close the public hearing on this issue. Thank you for coming. I'm going to open it up to council for discussion. Yes.
I would like to make a comment. I'm not as old as Kathy Doyle and Jim. Maybe I'm a little older, but I would like to make a motion that we pass this and then have discussion later. I would like to make a motion when we pass this one.
Second.
Go ahead. We got a second venue game? Okay, we got a motion to pass pending ordinance 2989, an ordinance after public hearing that would put $62,000 in the refurbishing of the Roberts Building from a Riverboat appropriation. It is now on the floor, and we're open to discussion. Go ahead, Nancy.
At our last meeting, the mayor asked me if I had received any phone calls. I had not. And Councilman Shomel said, "You need to talk with people on the street." I did that. Since that time, I've received three phone calls supporting the Roberts Building. I also talked with people on the street. They were all for it. I also met with Julie, our treasurer. I trust Julie, as she is extremely capable of handling our finances. Thanks, Julie. Considering all this done, and all of you, I vote yes.
Well, we're not voting yet, by the way. But it's nice to have an early vote. Ms. Montgomery?
How come you skipped me?
Oh, I thought you already talked. Sorry. Mr. Creech?
I was just a kid in County Doyle, you know. After our last meeting, the next day, the mayor and I went up to the Roberts Building, and we spent about two hours, had a nice tour. The mayor assured me that the $62,000 would complete the project, and I support the project. Thank you.
Ms. Montgomery? You abstained last time.
At our last meeting, I abstained. I had not been at the meeting where we were asked for money, and there was a discrepancy in what people said was said at that meeting. Since then, I've seen the minutes of the previous meeting, and I couldn't vote no because in good conscience I couldn't vote to close that building down. Like all of you, I have memories of that building. But since reading those minutes and hearing all of you, I have no doubt of how my, what my vote is going to be.
Gabe has been sick, but he came tonight because there's two issues on here that he thought was important.
I supported last time. I still support.
Well, two weeks ago, I made a statement I thought that we could continue on. Gabe joined Mr. Baker, Gary, Julie, and myself in purchasing one of the windows. So I'm certainly 100% in support of finishing the Roberts Building.
I really don't have any memories of it because I'm so young. I got memories of it. No, of course, I'm going to support it, but I would like to just ask the mayor. After last time, I've actually talked to two people, and you know, I'd like to you to rescind your promise from last time to Nancy, only because, you know, you promised that we would not, not ask for any more money. I'm saying that if we need $10,000 more, I wouldn't be afraid to ask for it.
I would.
Well, you tell me, and I'll ask, and they can say no. But I mean, I just, I don't want it to be so close, and there's a few things that need to be done. You don't have to rescind it all. You just tell me, and I'll ask.
No problem.
Okay. All right, so that's it. Okay. I shouldn't even bother.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming and caring. I also have received several phone calls for the building, and so I will also be voting yes. I actually have memories of that, too.
Are you that old?
Not in 4-H, but other activities.
Probably did some ultrasounds up there.
You're on pin eye, Slender. You're on pin eye.
Move time. I think if it's okay, we'll call for the questions. We'll have a roll call vote on pending ordinance 2989 allowing $62,000 from the Riverboat Fund to be spent on the Roberts Building. Julie?
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
You have unanimously passed that on first reading. If you'd like to suspend the rules, we could move directly to third.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and move the council directly to third and final reading on appropriation, pending ordinance 2989, which would put $62,000 in appropriation for the completion of the Roberts Building. Is there any discussion? None appearing on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any appeal? See, the record shows if one person opposes, we can't move forward. But since nobody opposes, we can go ahead and move forward. I'll take a motion on third and final read.
Submove.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pass pending ordinance 2989, an ordinance that would appropriate $62,000 from the Riverboat Fund to refinish the Roberts Building. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You have voted unanimously on third and final reading. It's a done deal. We're going to finish it. I think it would be well, most of you are on the bicentennial committee. We have a resolution before us tonight that Mr. Baker prepared. He wants to talk about it. I think since most of you are on the bicentennial committee, it would be well if you stayed to hear this before we let you go. And I know you don't want to hear the department reports, how much snow we plowed and how much sand we threw in. We entered into an agreement with historic Connersville, I don't know, two years ago or three years ago. And in that agreement, this is my resolution, you know it. I got it. When we entered into that, none of us had ever experienced celebrating 200 years before. None of us were here when they did the 150 years. Phil Fran might have been.
Where would I be?
Were you sitting in this chair?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. None of us were here. I got a pick on you once.
You know.
Anyway, we began to talk with the insurance. Anyway, we began to talk with the insurance, the company that we're insured with, and we began to talk with the carrier that carries the insurance, and we realized that we had a lot of loopholes in our responsibility. So Mr. Baker and the insurance carrier and I got together, we also got together with members of Historic Connersville and bicentennial committee, and it was suggested by all these, Historic Connersville, bicentennial committee, city, that we come together with a resolution that more protects the people that are doing the celebration and puts the responsibility onto the city. Reason being, the city has insurance, and as long as these things that are sanctioned by the city, the city's insurance will cover them. Our insurance carrier was here at the first meeting, I don't see him. Did he have to leave?
He was right there.
Do you want to speak first, do you want Brad to speak first?
Oh, either way, it's fine.
Brad, do you, do you want to give a dissertation on why we're doing this? Up front, up front. All or no Brad Wilson, Wilson, Lawson, Myers, there, the insurance carrier for the city.
During the course of the conversations, as far as event planning and so on that take place, the question was raised if the city was going to sanction or authorize events that are going to be held. And also, on the other side of the ledger, there was concern about liability and who's going to assume those liabilities. So after conversation with the mayor, Mr. Baker, and many, many others, that they felt that the resolution needed to be redrafted, bringing events that were going to take place on city property before the Board of Works, using the facility, the usage agreements, along with the presentation of certificates of insurance for those that are businesses that are going to have financial gain during this opportunity, and also puts Julie as the gatekeeper of those certificates of insurance, so that the city knows specifically what they will be obligated to as things move on. And once again, I, my opinion, from what I've seen, it's in the best interest of everyone to move forward with a revised resolution.
Thank you. And Mr. Baker, you're on the floor.
Well, under the previous agreement, which you alluded to, it was, it was an informal agreement, and Historic Connersville was very much on the firing line for expense and tort claim liability, because they were the lead agency responsible for the bicentennial celebration, which, which put their assets at risk, in my opinion. It's a city celebration, and 90 to 95% of the bicentennial activities will be on city property, including city streets, the parade, for example, city park, city parking lot, city buildings. And the city will have the financial responsibility for the expense and tort claim liability for these events. Therefore, the city should have final control, I think, over activities to limit liability and approve expenses to the extent possible, and to ensure proper insurance coverage of all liability issues. This resolution is a joint resolution between the Board of Works and the City Council, and it, it provides that the bicentennial committee will be an ad hoc committee of the Board of Works, and all financial matters, including but not limited to donations and expenses, shall be under the auspices of the committee, which will be known as the Connersville Bicentennial Committee, that the officers and members of the current committee continue in their respective capacities, and that the Connersville Bicentennial Committee report monthly or more often to the Board of Public Works and Safety on all budget matters, all matters concerning liability, insurance coverage of various participants in the bicentennial celebration, and on all matters concerning the financial responsibility of the city of Connersville regarding bicentennial expenses of various kinds, with the understanding that as the bicentennial celebration is a celebration of the city of Connersville, the city of Connersville will be responsible for all expenses of the celebration not otherwise donated or agreed to be paid by other entities. And we, like the mayor indicated, this was brought together in consultation and agreement with Historic Connersville, and it's been determined that it would be in the best interest of Historic Connersville and the celebration and the city of Connersville that this type of an arrangement be used. One of the things that concerned me, and I think concerned Historic Connersville, was their exposure liability-wise, expense-wise, tort claim-wise. This relieves that and puts it over on the Board of Works and the city of Connersville, and the city has insurance, substantial insurance, and that's, I think, where the liability should be. So with that in mind, I'd recommend the City Council consider passing this joint resolution.
Before we move on on that, the Board of Works earlier this evening passed that with the expectation that if you passed it, they would follow, kind of your orders, what you want us to do. I'll open it up first to the, anybody have any comment on this resolution? I think everybody in this room pretty much is aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it. I went to the bicentennial committee and briefly kind of told people, I think some of you had it to read. Any comments from anybody out there at all? None at all? Okay, council, you've had this two or three days in your hand, it's a little complicated. When I saw that we were responsible for the money, I told John I didn't like this, and he said, "It won't make any difference, it's the city celebration, however you do it, the city's not responsible." So we have a nine-member committee in charge of finance, and I serve on that, if I can't be there, Julie serves on it. I'll be probably times when her and I'll both go, because as I told the early meeting, she's good at money, good at holding on to it. And that committee has agreed that out of the nine, five people have to agree to spend the money before it can be spent. And you've got bankers on there, and you've got professional people on there, along with bicentennial people. So I think we're doing the best we can, learn by going how to celebrate this bicentennial. And basically, this resolution tonight changes nothing, we're going straight ahead with all the things that are already going. I'm ready for council to discuss it. Questions? Go ahead, Mr. Creach.
What Mr. Baker said, I agree with 100%. All these people that have worked their tails off on this bicentennial committee, and if someone falls at the parking, the parking lot over here and gets hurt, there's no way should they have any responsibility. Now, I do have a question, and I know most of the people in this committee, they're good people. I'm not questioning anyone's integrity, but I, I'm responsible for the city finances as a councilperson. And my only question on C, John, on part of C, it says, it says, and just enlighten me, it says, "City of Connersville will be responsible for all expenses of the bicentennial celebration not otherwise donated or agreed to be paid by other entities." I guess what I'm saying now, does the bicentennial committee, they have to go through the Board of Public Works before they spend money?
That's anticipated in this resolution, yes.
Okay, what I'm saying, John, this is extreme, and I could say, I know these people are good people, but if someone wants to spend 50 grand for a bronze statue of John Connor, are we on the hook for it?
No, only if it's approved by the Board of Works.
That's, that was my question. That was my question. Okay, no problem.
I think most of these expenditures will be blanketly approved, they'll take them to Board of Works and say, we got 52 committees right now that have put budgets in to the Finance Committee to look at. Once those 52 budgets, we, I presume we would give them to Board of Works, give them a financial report, and they would approve them, not individually.
But I just want you folks to understand, my reason for the question is, we represent, we have to represent with the city, and I question no one's integrity in the committee.
Mr. Bishop put it straight at the second meeting, it's another layer of protection we've laid on the whole thing, to be sure that nobody gets hurt. That's not to say that if we're over there in the parking lot, and the judge is here, so they could sue Donna because she was sponsoring that day, she's a day chairman, but it would be less likely that she'd end up giving her house and farm away, because it happened in the city parking lot, they would sue the city. Am I seeing it right, John?
The city would have primary liability.
That's what we're trying to get away from, individual liability versus city. And remember, the city is you folks, and you all pay into it with your taxes to pay for this liability, so you should have the protection. Nancy?
I just want to thank all the people on the other board so hard on this bicentennial project. I appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Montgomery?
I too would like to thank all of you that are working so hard, it's going to be great. I remember the last one.
You're much older than me. You're a captain.
I was three.
I talked about it at the Board of Works meeting, and my questions were cleared up by Mr. Baker.
President?
I'm fine with everything.
Yeah, my question was, was cleared up by Toms, and I trust John, I'm fine with it.
Okay, we're ready to make a decision on Resolution 2013-02.
I'll make the motion, we pass Resolution 2013-03.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None appearing. This is a resolution, it only takes one vote, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have approved this unanimously, and I appreciate your patience tonight. We got a couple other things, and we got departmental reports. What'd you say? I want to take a two-minute break here and allow Connie and Gabe, Connie's sick bed came down here because he thought this issue was important. And Connie really needs to be where she needs to be.
She's not holding her breath.
If any of you folks would like to go home, you can, but we invite you to stay if you'd like to stay and watch the list there.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll try to get back on our agenda We have some outstanding checks, this comes up every year, approval receipt of two-year outstanding checks. Julie, do you want to, do you have to read them, or what's the law? How many have you got?
I've got five.
These are people that didn't cash their checks that we paid after two years.
City has five. We give it to what it's has.
Five each. Five city and five individuals. What we do is...
Seep those back into the funds for more than...
So we just put it back into the fund.
It's a pretty big one.
I need a motion to that.
I'll make that motion, John.
Okay, I got a motion to pass 2013-02. Now, 20...
This isn't the rest of the...
No, no. Approval to receive the two-year outstanding checks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I think I'm down to pending ordinance 2990, public hearing and additional appropriation. This is for...
Legal notices for tax abatements.
And what, we are by contract paying so much?
Well, we don't appropriate, we don't have a budget for tax abatements, that's not appropriated.
Okay.
So at the beginning of each year, we go ahead and appropriate some money for an additional appropriation out of the tax abatement fund, to pay for any tax abatements.
You all understand that?
Yeah, I do, we return it once we receive payment.
That's how the fund is funded.
Right.
It's $300, Julie?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion that we pass pending ordinance 6050.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have opportunity to suspend the rules if you'd like.
So we...
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 2990.
Second.
All in favor of suspension of rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. On third and final reading, pending ordinance 2990. Second. Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We need to have a public hearing for, we had to spend $18,000 some odd dollars on electric up at the Vistion plant.
$18,605.
How much?
$18,605.
Okay. And then we also have attorney's fees of 17...
$430.
$17,430. This is when we negotiated the sales contract, and when we negotiated the contract with Carbon Motors on the sale of the building, when we had to consult, John didn't get it, it's Indianapolis attorneys. So I need to have permission, advertise for a public hearing and additional appropriation.
Your honor, on this $18,000, is that the one we talked about this morning?
Yes.
You thought it was going to be 35?
Yeah.
We got it for 18?
Yeah, we thought it was going to be 35. One of the big units up there blew out that furnished electricity, and last week, we had to have it fixed because we have renters in there, and people, Joey got the people to fix it, and he estimated to me it would be 35, then he said not more than 33, and then we got the bill as 18. So we've done well. We'll take that out of the $200,000 down payment, we won't take it out of tax money. But I need a motion to advertise a public hearing.
I would like to make a motion for a public hearing.
Save it.
Got a motion that we advertise a public hearing to take care of those two items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go. I think that's the end of it. I want to open this up to a public forum for the City Council, anybody'd like to speak on any issue? Any issue at all? Yes, Reverend.
The dilapidated homes in town that are at some point torn down, is there an item in the budget, where would money come from?
We take money from the general fund at times, we've taken money from the Riverboat Fund, we take, some of the times, we take the homes down ourselves. If we're able to, at the Board of Works meeting tonight, the chief of police talked about a home on 12th and Grand that needs to be taken care of, and Mr. Baker's going to begin work on that tomorrow.
I was just curious where the funds came from.
It's very difficult, because we spent, we don't want to spend money tearing houses down. We don't want to spend money building up, tearing down.
Thank you.
Anything else under public forum? Anybody? None appearing, but closed the public forum. Let's go into our department reports. We got the first thing on the agenda would be EDG.
Mr. Mayor, council, December was a possibly slow month, as historically, we did continue to work on the project that reflected on your report. Let's talk about what happened in 2012 as far as EDG is concerned. We responded to 53 leads, and I don't know if any of you have ever seen what those leads look like, but they're quite time-consuming to respond to, and we continue to push our community and push the assets of our community, where, and I think we probably received about 75 leads, some of them we just didn't respond to, we didn't have the resources that they I want to skip and not go through all the narrative, but I want to talk about some kind of really important things. We were party to investments of over $17 million in this community, we supported a number of companies that were making investments. We were a party to the addition of about 215 jobs, doesn't seem like a lot, but that is a lot. And, and we can feel that we were directly responsible when most instances for these jobs got encountered from. And we saved, this is just one that I know of, that we directly saved 23 jobs, 20% of the workforce of Sapphic Corporation with the support of the city, and we did that by making available space to them in our Vistion building. If they hadn't had that space available, they potentially would have lost about 20% of their business, i.e. 20% of their employees. lost about twenty percent of their business, i.e. twenty percent of their employees. So... And I guess the upside of that, Julie will attest to the fact that we are generating some revenue for the city to offset some of the expenses related to the maintenance of that facility. We're seeing continued growth. Walmart Plaza is growing. Some of you saw it in the newspaper this morning. I think we announced earlier in the year that Goodwill was coming. I don't know if any of you have seen the new Goodwill stores, but they're not what they used to be. There's some pretty fancy facilities now. And then surrounding that will be some other businesses that we've been made aware of that will potentially be moving in there. So we feel real good about that. Indiana Ordnance is a company that was dying. We've worked with them diligently. The mayor and I met with them early in the year. I've had several meetings after that. They recently sold, and are now starting to regrow their business. And they're hoping to have twenty-five employees by the end of the year. So we're going to continue to support them and wish them well. And one other thing that I'll speak to is, we decided that we were going to develop a different strategy in terms of how we market our community. Historically, not just the city, Connerville, Bay County, but historically, economic development has waited for business to come to them, for leads to come from the state or from other places. But we've sat in our office and waited. What we've decided to do is, we're going to become the vacuum cleaner salesman. And we're hoping that this month, or end of this month, first to next month, we'll make our first sales calls. We're going to actually go out and knock on doors. We've targeted a specific industry. We've had the funding approved by our Economic Development Board to travel, and we'll be traveling to New York, North Carolina, and Illinois, again, all by the end of March. So, any questions?
Pete, I have a question. I have a comment in regards to, as you refer to as the vacuum salesman. I think that's awesome, because our community is no different than any other that we're setting and waiting for the next General Motors plan or whatever. But I think it's... I think it's great and be commended that you folks are after your time to sell off.
Thank you. I'd like to say something, sir, with your permission.
Is it going to cost me anything?
Probably. Now, over this past year, Pete has run Economic Development, and you remember, he's a volunteer. He doesn't get paid. Uses his own truck, his own gas. I haul him around and...
That dilapidated city car.
I haul him around down to town. When we go, we've made trips all over, Saturday nights, Friday nights, when you'd like to be home with your family. And that's when you got to do it, because you got to go meet him when the meetings are. We've met in Greek restaurants. We've met in places I ate stuff I never thought I'd ever get. He is doing a great job, so I'm trying to get across on a volunteer basis, because we cannot afford to commit to an economic development director when our funds are so not sure. So we continue to do that, and I think Pete deserves something. He does it all volunteer. I get paid a little from the city, but that was supposed to be to run the city. But we do it, and we're glad to do it, because we want it here. But Pete, I really do appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
He's here every morning. We have a little conference meeting. He works on things. He's on his cellphone all the time. Then in the afternoon, before I go home, he's usually here. We touch base what happened that day. While he's gone, Brenda and I work together. It works pretty good, really, but it's working. When you see this and you add up all those jobs on this bright corner over here, two hundred and some jobs over the last year, really is pretty good.
Well, yeah, Pete had mentioned about whether it was only twenty-five jobs. Well, if you're one of those twenty-five people, that's tremendous. That's tremendous. But again, I thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank Pete.
Good night.
Good night.
You don't have to leave, Pete.
Yes, I did.
Police Department.
David, you've got about three, four minutes.
I've got two or three minutes.
Okay. I'm going to go over. I got December, end of December's report, and then also our annual report, which basically both of them are about the same, except the month of December, we had one thousand twenty-seven law reports, twenty-five citations issued, two ordinance violations, twenty-five warnings, thirteen first-linjury actions, forty-seven property damage actions, several fatalities, and seventy-five arrests. Which brings the annual to come up to fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven law reports, three hundred ninety-eight citations issued, thirty-four ordinance violations, two hundred ninety-eight warnings, ninety-two first-linjury actions, five hundred and six property damage actions, one fatality, and one thousand two hundred and forty-five arrests. Flip it over. Only thing, and Frank, you'll probably notice our overtime's down quite a bit. Only thing on the other employees that's out a little bit, it was comp time paid out. The guys and gals that had the comp time, they cashed it in at the end of the year. So that's why it's a little higher than the norm. Really, I think, well, yeah, it's a little higher than the norm. So other than that, that's... I think the pocket budget for this year was pretty good. So, so I have.
If I'm reading that right, and I think I can read across there, ninety-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents overtime. That is the lowest in six years.
Yeah, I can't remember being that low.
We haven't been under a hundred thousand since I've been here, and we were in the two fifty prior to that.
Yes.
And I want to say something, that the part-time does help, but I want to tell you something. These guys, especially the last six to eight months, have really, really worked with the city. The FLP and the police officers out here on scheduling and everything else, and I have to hand it to them. They really have cut back themselves in way we schedule and everything else. I do the schedules on three shifts, but it's like when I do it anymore, it's pretty simple. They don't tip their ass for the sun and moon. They take... They know what they can get and everything else. There's no game plan or anything else. And they've done a good job of helping the city cut back on overtime. So I want to give them a hand. Of course, the three, the four, three, four part timers we got, they help also. But a lot of it's coming from the cooperation from the officers.
Dave? A fatality, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I have to go back and remember myself. I can't remember which.
We didn't have a fatality in twelve, but...
Yeah, I think we did.
Didn't that motorcycle accident?
I have to, I have to check. Yeah, we had a fatality. I can't remember where it was.
I didn't think we did. I was just bragging the other day that...
Uh, I think, I have to check. I don't want to sit there and say where it was. I have to check it. We'll get with you tomorrow on it.
If I may, I would like to commend the Council Police Department on citations issued and warnings. And what I'm saying is, due to difficult financial constraints in this city, you know, it is extremely difficult to drive down any street where you don't see a police car patrol. And I think it's wonderful that the officers who do double duty when they issue tickets, they understand what it costs, and you really have to be pushed in a corner if they're going to do it. And I'd like to commend them. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much on behalf of my officers.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any more?
Total expenditures for 2012. You want to read it? You want me to?
No, you go ahead. But I thought you were going to read it, because we've not even looked at the paper.
Two million, six hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I guess that's good.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, friend.
Street Department.
You've got all the sheets here. I don't want to talk about any of that stuff. We don't have time. We've got two minutes, Mayor said. What I'd like to talk about is trash and what we're doing and what we need to do yet. So far, we're rolling along pretty well. There's some things we have to fix, and we will. But just remember, when you set your trash around, your toter on the ground, they will not pick it up anymore. We've had some people that's not liking that, but that's the way the rules are.
You mean when you lay it over?
Yeah, they're laying it around on the ground, on the bottom, around the bottom. Last week, they did that. We picked them up, trying to get everybody caught up. But we're... Should be caught up, and we worked a holiday Monday yesterday, so I think we'll roll on right on along. We're not going to back up and do different trashes. The way it looks now for the rest of the year, we'll still pick up trash every holiday throughout the year and not have a Saturday or some of it, because we're on a five-day schedule. So there's no way of shifting back and forth like we used to. Recyclables are still on Thursday. Don't put them in your trash hopper, your tote. Put it in your bags that we furnish the people of town. So just the main thing is, I got a lot of complaints about, why aren't you picking it up? It's the trash you always did. Well, just because you always did, doesn't make it right. So I appreciate everybody's help that way.
Only trash in the toters will be picked up.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure.
Round set, hard trash.
What happens if the toter's backwards? They still pick it up, but it's not as efficient?
You can still pick it up, but it's not right. If you'll take it and just push it to the curb, and we're trying to put it back. If you don't have it where it's good to be picked up, we're trying to put it back in the location where we'd like, we would prefer it, where the arm can reach out and grab it. So we are doing some helping hands that way. We're trying to teach people. Next week, week after, if things aren't good, I'll go around and mark a spot for them. And that's all I can do, to try to help the folks. We have some elderly people in town, and we're working with those folks, trying to get it to the street, and they have some issues. But we... I knocked on a couple doors today and talked to the ladies and tried to work with them. So we're not negative about this stuff, because we're learning too, and we do want to help everybody that has trash, and we want to take care of it and make the city look as good as we can.
Dave, are you just down to one truck now?
Well, tomorrow, we'll have two trucks out. Tomorrow's a big day. And so far, the three drivers we have already doing... He's my one driver. He's doing a pretty good job. Actually, Monday, yesterday, of course, I put another driver with him just in case. You know, the full eight hours is kind of a long day to the first time out. They got back in the building yesterday afternoon, quarter after three. So they did it under eight hours with the little one truck. So that's a good day. But tomorrow's a big day. There's some shifting around, maybe coming down the road where we need to take Wednesday, Thursday. We need to do some shifting, but I'm going to keep it like it is until we learn this, before I make any more changes.
You know, I actually talked to one of the trashmen, and they actually liked the truck.
Yeah.
And they're... I mean, they said positive things about it, which is good.
But, you know, we have our issues, and we'll work through those. But I think overall, the people just have to, have to understand, this is what it is, and this is what we're doing. I get calls, some negative calls, but again, awful lot of nice calls, too. So they outweigh the negative folks.
Can I change the subject just a little bit? Will there be a big trash day?
I was just going to get into that. I want Tom and David, because of the bicentennial, to go ahead and start planning that, will you?
Yeah.
They have to work it out.
Can I just throw you out something, just so you can all think about? What I'd like to do is start, is have a week every month where people call in and tell me they got trash at such and such address. I take that last week of the month and go pick it up.
You're talking about big trash?
Right. I might have two calls. I might have fifty calls. At the very start, it'd be a lot. But I would like to work out... That way, it doesn't hit the budget, and it works out to where I can plan on how much trash, how many calls I have. And we have to limit it to furnitures and different things, household things. That way, we can't do big appliances, tire advantage, like we have, you know, like we've done in the past. But I'd like to set up something where we can do that the last week of the month and just carry it right on through the year. It's just something I'd like to throw out.
But you guys can work that out, if that's the thing I'm recommending.
We want to get it cleaned before the bicentennial.
Yeah. I had calls today wanting to know if we were going to pick up heavy trash before the bicentennial. I mean, you know...
It's something we always, we like to do.
Yeah, we usually do it in the Easter time. We need to do it more like the mayor or the council.
Yeah, so I'm thinking the year-round thing, if we can continue this throughout the years.
And some communities do that, as David.
I think Rushville might. I think they might. Another thing I'd like to start doing is just go up and down our alleys. We have alley problems. We had a call the other day. There was a mattress in the middle of an alley. We went and picked it up. But I think I need to send the folks out to check some alleys and do some of that kind of stuff, too, that we haven't done in years past. Just all kinds of things that way that...
Okay. The other thing, I talked with Barton Barker, president of the county commissioners. They bought five new trucks. They have five trucks down there. One's a single axle, usable. He's willing to work with us. I'd like for you to ask Phil and yourself to go down and look at the five trucks they're going to get rid of. One has a snowplow on it. We're plowing five, six districts with five trucks. If that's something Phil thinks we can use, and we can talk him into giving it to us, or maybe it's not good out of... Laugh at me.
Give?
Give.
You don't know Barton that well.
Something I wish I'd done that, because I just put a... Phil just put a clutch in one of the trucks I'd like to get rid of last night.
I know, but it's really bad when we have a district that doesn't get plowed to four or five o'clock.
Right.
And it's not, it's not fair.
And I'm learning some of the areas in town that's been kind of the last ones on the block to get it done, and I'm learning those.
But I want you and Phil to go down there, talk to Jay. He'll show you the trucks they got, and ask Phil if one of them is something that we use. I thought the single axle with the plow on it might be the one we...
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Just, you know, to plow snow in the city, you don't have to have as good a truck as you do to run out on those kind of roads. So, okay.
Be glad to. Thank you.
Nor the next day, will you?
All right. Thank you.
Cost of operating the street department, are you interested?
Yes, we are interested.
Yeah.
So lose weight.
Please, Fran.
One million, eight hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
See, I'm cheaper than he is.
That's right.
Julie, how much? Well, donuts.
How much state assistance do we get?
I don't know right off the top of my head, Fran.
I've got an appropriation report in there that shows the difference.
But it doesn't show what the... How much money we get from the state.
But all this, this is local tax money?
No.
Yeah.
So, that's good.
Yeah, we do get funds from the state.
Right, and some gasoline taxes coming back to the city and some other funding.
Okay. Utilities... Not right. You got your utility report here, and you noticed in water, the last month of the year, we lost money. Each month, you take. Three months this year, we lost money. Usually, that means that the Water Works had to authorize buying a pump, buying a big piece of equipment, doing something. You turn over the yellow, and you'll see three months, we lost money. However, it's a different month. Again, that's...
They don't have those.
Huh?
They don't have those.
Oh, you don't have this report. Okay. Stormwater, we lost money, July, August, September, October, November, December. Now, the question is, do you get a free lunch? If you can tell me why, we lost money five months in a row. You're not included, because we were paying for the project up there on the twenty...
Twenty-third.
Okay. Transfer station. Anybody here know anything about transfer?
Anybody have a question regarding the transfer station? I do apologize. I do not have the year-end report. It's my fault. I will have it next month. Scout's honor.
Look, the records show he didn't have a year-end before. All in favor?
But the total expenditures, Tom, five hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars, seventy-nine cents. But you generate some funding every month.
Yes. Yes, we... I think, Fran, if you look at the ones, I think we received a little over a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars.
I would think so.
We generate, and then what goes towards the trash fee. So, yeah, we do generate income. And for the community to know, we do not make money. We're not supposed to make money in the transfer station. We'd like to break even, but we're, you know, it's a service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Chief?
Troy Dipton.
He looks sharp. He cleans up nice.
You do. You look sharp tonight.
In December, we had ninety total runs, three hundred ninety man-hours on emergencies, three inspections, seven investigations, couple of pre-plans, and a hundred and six hours of training. For the year, twelve hundred and seventeen total runs, thirty-two hundred ninety-nine and a half hour man-hours on emergencies, ninety inspections, seventy-four investigations, a hundred and eighty-four hours of pre-planning, and three thousand point four in training. For the month of December, we used part-time twenty-one days for a savings of approximately seventy-two hundred. And for the year, we used them two hundred and sixteen days for a savings of approximately seventy-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Our monthly brand would be higher because of fringe benefits and specialty pays.
Yes, that all... That's right.
Troy, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Total for the month for last year, I'm sorry, for the last year, two million, six hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents for tours.
Troy, if I may, I would like to publicly thank you, Level 2205, for working with the mayor and Board of Public Works on this part-time employees. We... All the council truly appreciate something you're trying to do.
I think Lyndon would agree. We've put a lot of hours in. Safety committee, I looked, last time I looked, it was almost three hundred dollars a year, and they don't get paid. They volunteer to do it, the firemen.
I think, Troy, I'm going to face up to something right here. I've been catching it. The last fireman we hired lives just over the line in Union County.
Well, he's not hired yet.
Hold on. That you proposed for us to hire. Of the ten part-time firemen we got, five live out of town, being because they're already firemen. They've been trained. They got all the skills. That's what we're looking for, so we don't have to train them to do all that stuff. have to train them to do all that stuff. Some of those guys are just great guys and he has recommended to the board of works that we hire this fireman. I'm catching it in my office because this man lives over the line in Union County. Now, we do not have an ordinance that requires you to live inside the city of Connersville or in Fayette County. We are allowed to have that ordinance if we want it, that's home rule, but we don't have it. And I think that Troy and the safety committee tried to pick the best person. Safety commission made up of Troy, member of the board of works, two union members and the president of the union. They go over all, does the person come on time? Do, are they aggressive? Do this. And then they pick one of that ten, according to the union contract, and recommend to me, and I in turn recommend to board of works. If the council feels strong that everybody that's hired needs to come from the city of Connersville or Fayette County, then you need to have in the back of your head, you need to pass an ordinance to that effect and we'll go back to the drawing board. But it's hard when you've got five in and five out. If you tell them, well, we're only hiring in town, those five are going to leave us.
No.
They are.
The one you hired from over the county where we resi, I mean, do we have other Fayette County residents that you, that you interviewed?
We have.
And this was the best?
Well, it was the best according to safety committee.
The part-time. And we rate them on a lot of different things, but where we stand on that is, we went through all the officers, we interviewed them twice. We had to pick who we felt the officers was their top recommendation. Being that we're running at seven and when they're hired, they're going to be working with up to two of the part-times themselves, so we've got to have the ones that they're thinking the fastest and stuff. Not knocking any of the rest of them, we just need to keep working with them and getting there. And they're coming up to speed, but we need the ones that's up to speed right now.
So, I mean, if you had a Fayette County resident who was up to speed and equal to this other one, you would probably, yeah, but you didn't have that.
Right.
Okay.
But they're, but they're close.
Right.
I mean, it's a very, it's a very hard decision when you're dealing with these, hiring and promoting of these firefighters, but this is what the committee felt was the strongest candidate.
To get this out of politics, we put this safety board into place a year ago so that it's looked at and then recommended. They don't have the say-so, board of works actually has the say-so, but, you know, that's why we put it in place. But if this council feels real strong, then you have to pass an ordinance saying you have to live in the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Baker? I, I think, and I may be wrong, I think I read an enough star a year or two ago. I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can mandate that you have to live, because if I had my way, everybody lived in Connersville. Fran, I talked about that.
I think you're right, Tom.
But I don't think we, I don't think we can do that.
I think they're just like yours.
John, do you know?
I don't know. I think we can.
The IC code's pretty clear and that's what we follow when we hire. The IC code, which I can read to you, it's in my book, states that they have to live in the county or surrounding county. The only time, according to the IC code, that you can change the ordinance that you're suggesting is if your city is under seventy-five hundred, which we're not, then we can, I don't think we can even introduce the ordinance.
I don't think we can do that.
I believe the state law says that within forty-five minutes of their place of employment.
Counties surrounding counties.
Yes, adjacent county, I believe.
But anyway, I don't want to belabor this. If you have problems with that, you know, we've put everything into place to try to do the right thing.
And multiple hours to do the right thing and trust me, we just, that's where we're at. But we have to have the best person at the time.
I say dump it on the mayor and board of public works. What do you say, Eric?
Thanks. Took the words out of my mouth.
We've been taking it very well, but I wanted everybody to know why it was done that way. It was done because that's the way the setup is.
I think if you look at Troy's report on overtime, and I think it really clearly shows that this has really worked, the part-time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Because when you get down into August, September, October, that's when you can see the difference it's made.
They have people off on sick leave, but for part-time to work, they have to have the lighted in the tunnel that they can be hired. And that's where we keep the number at a certain number and we're trying, we're balancing act with this, but it is working.
Yes, we've noticed it.
And we're safer in a lot of ways, too.
Good.
Appreciate it. Thanks again, Troy, appreciate it.
Thank you, Troy. EMS.
Nope. It's been quiet since we left.
Hi, Troy. For the month of December, we had two hundred and seven runs. Our expenses was sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six, thirty-six for the city show. Our receipts was twenty-two thousand, three eighty-eight, sixty-nine, per total of forty-four thousand, two hundred and seven, sixty-seven. For the year, our expenses for the city was five hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and six, eighteen. Our receipts was two hundred and thirty-two, six twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and our total was two seventy-six, seven, seven, eight, eighty-nine for twenty-four hundred and ninety-eight runs for the year.
Very good. It's a cost of a million, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, thirty-five cents to operate your unit.
Right.
But you guys bring in almost fifty percent in which.
Yes, we brought in fifty, we've come out to fifty, five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yes.
I can tell you, I look at this all the time, there is no city our size running their EMS at this cost that we're running our, we are half the price. Cambridge City's struggling with it, Rain County's struggling with it, every place is struggling with EMS. We're not struggling with EMS, it's working great. To get the entire county covered for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars after income is amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Getting back to the annuals, is it still running? I mean, what?
Yep.
Okay.
So far, it's, seems to be doing pretty good.
Worst-case scenario, in the event we had to purchase one, now would the, would the counties put that with us, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
I've already discussed it with them, they're prepared.
Okay.
They understand where we are with the old six, the six-oh motor and Phil's investigating it. We're on top of it and we're waiting on the grant. We've got a grant that's probably due in March. If we don't get that grant, we'll have to go to Plan B.
Okay.
We're working on Plan B, getting it lined up in case.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Lean you.
Parks Department, the last Parks Department. Oh no, we got one after that TV.
I would love to. Department of Parks, Parks.
Okay. Show now my report. December is included in the year-end report. Hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it. Let me highlight some. We had a pretty good year last year. The Parks Department, attached in the back is the pool report, which you guys have seen in the past. And also attached is my yearly revenue and it goes back to the first year that I started. This year, we generate two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Last year was two hundred and twenty-one, so we had an increase in revenue. Miller Center is up a little bit, at twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Summer Discovery had a big jump of about seventy-five hundred dollars. And our new line item there, the Nomi-Bird and James Roberts, had two thousand dollars in it, but we try to keep it year-to-year. If there's any big jumps or big dives, we can take a look at that, is why it happened. The back page is our monthly expenditures, two thousand and eleven on top, two thousand and twelve on the bottom. Seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars was our, what we spent this year. Our budget was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars was over, but it was also, we had staff added to our budget. And if you look, payroll is about thirty, thirty-five thousand of that. So I think we did pretty well, but we, if you remember, we had a staff add halfway through the year and we had to get additional.
We pay the maintenance department out of the park fund.
So, other than that, upcoming events. Two thousand and thir, two thousand and thirteen has many challenges ahead. We still have some repairs and repairs to do with the completion of the John, the James Roberts building, the bicentennial celebrations in July. It's going to stretch our budget to eleven and I need to be very careful that we don't spend the whole budget by June this year. And so me and you have talked about, we've got to take a closer look at that. What's going on this year? We got finalized a purchase of additional land at the soccer field, one point six acres to get additional parking. That's just about done. That has drug on for a few months. Our indoor soccer started tonight. We're adding some new programs this year. T-ball for boys and girls, girl slow pitch leagues, and we're taking sign-ups right now for those leagues. The T-ball is three and four-year-olds and five and six. Since we're taking over those leagues, there's, we have so many spent on the concession stands at those areas, they're pretty bad over the years, so that's something we've really got to look at. And also the restrooms down in Deister Park. You remember, car ran into it late in the year and something we really need to look at and get it repaired. The last thing, handed a flyer to you guys for the James Roberts fundraiser. We tried to do this last year, but we needed the Miller Center to have a, the whole building free and there wasn't really no dates available and the first date available for the whole building is April twentieth. So we have a chicken dinner scheduled, April twentieth, four to eight, chicken fried by the night to Columbus. Also along with that, in the banquet hall will be a silent auction, so if anybody has any connections for some gifts, we will welcome that. Tickets can be purchased at the office at John Miller Center. Any questions?
How much does a ticket cost, Mike?
Eight dollars for adults, four dollars age twelve and hundred.
Do you have any windows left?
Everything is sold.
Oh, good.
Oh wait, I have a door.
And a door.
I have a door. Would you like to buy a door?
How much is a door?
Five hundred bucks. I put a tooth on it.
You will?
No. Small tooth.
Can you save the door till the market?
Yes. I'll tell you how that came about.
Where's the door? Front door? The entrance door?
It's an entrance door.
No, I mean, to the place. We want that door.
The main door?
We want the main door.
The, the main door.
No, we want the main door.
Sixteen thousand dollars, all in favor? So, let me tell you how that happened. After we had our meeting last week and we were up here arguing about whether we were going to finish it or not, everybody got scared and the windows sold out the next morning. That was good. But then Judge Flockman, I think he's still here, comes down, he said, what about my window? We didn't have one. And we've been talking to him about one. I said, would you consider the door? He says, sure. So he got his checkbook out, wrote his check for five hundred bucks and he sold it in the door. I called my ex-wife. I called my ex-wife, and I shouldn't have called her that, but to identify her. And I told her that I'd sold the door and she said, what next? I said, I'm thinking about selling the light fixtures. I know, Nancy, I won't be here long anymore. But anyway, we raised about three thousand, thirty-five hundred that morning. And that's why when Gary said, are you sure sixty-two is going to be enough? Yeah, we're going to have this fundraiser. It'll allow us maybe to do a little landscaping, maybe a little extras by these fundraisers we're doing. We, you know, we got to put that curtain, the school gave us a nice curtain for the stage and we got to put it up and pay for it. But anyway, Mike, I appreciate what you've done.
I do too.
There's something you need to know about these department heads, Mike, Troy, Dave, and Dave, Joe. Reason we're doing good is because they care. They care about the people, they care about saving money, they care about their job, but it's not them, that's number one. It's the town and the people and getting the job done right. And I watch Mike, he works up there, he's not supposed to because the union tells him, but he does anyway.
We will.
Mike, you're not supposed to be a bucket truck changing walls. No, I just had to do it.
You're in trouble now.
No, I want to tell you something else about the union people at the park. They have worked side-by-side with our maintenance people and they have bought into the building. They are so proud of what they've done up there. The kids have bought into the building. They are so proud of what they've done up there. And it's, it's amazing. I'll shut it off.
Well, my chair, my secretary and Daryl, they do a great job. That gives me time to go do, do those type of things. Like you said, my guys are, whatever we need them to do, they'll do. So it's, it's a staff.
Don't you think they're proud of what they're doing?
The only good is, you know, is your people around you, so. Oh yeah, they're in there, I mean, Claire's in there every day, the other two guys.
Eddie whistles when he works.
Eddie whistles when he works. And the other two guys will jump in there anytime we need them to, so it's a whole group.
There was a, on the stage area, there was a bunch of stuff glued up there and had pretty wainscoting behind it. And we tore that off and, oh my God, it was covered with glue. I said to Mike, I said, do you think one of the guys could scrape that off? I go in the next morning, it's scraped and sanded, beautiful. Yeah. One of the park guys got in there and did it. Ah, quit bragging on you, you want a raise.
Well, you see the cover of the book, that's, that's pretty much all Daryl's programs on the, on the front of it, all recreational stuff for youth, young adults, so we're trying to cover everything.
You don't have Santa on there.
I just ran out of space. Go on, next one.
Cable TV, channel three. Did you think we'd never get to you?
I'll try to be quick. December report, we had eleven hours, twenty-four minutes of meetings, thirteen hours, forty-eight minutes of original programming. Of course, we've started the TV Three Bolt, which airs weekdays at eight AM and Saturdays at ten PM. They have a different show from the past every week. You never know what we're going to put on, so you've got to watch. The past ones we played, we had the two thousand and two CHS Christmas Choir, the two thousand Great Race. We played the ninety-nine Fair Queen, the two thousand and two graduation at CHS, which surprised some people. And this week, I will tell you what's on, the Phil Dirk concert that we recorded years ago when they were doing the Beach Boys. And it's pretty good, so you don't want to catch that.
You missed one, you had the two thousand and two parade on there.
Yeah, I had that. I actually had a guy call me up and say, I need two of those copies right now. I actually had a guy call me up and say, I need two of those copies right now.
I, I told Julie, her mom's on there, on the cloud platform?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my.
Yeah. You never know what's on there.
I need to see that.
I really enjoyed watching it. I watched the whole thing.
It's, it's really good, you know, to look back at the, at the past two there. We have a whole bunch of stuff, so you'll never know what we're gonna play. Let's see, um, on the annual report, uh, I know there's a lot of information in there, uh, but, uh, we, we produced fifty-seven events for a total of seventy-four hours of programming, which is eight hours more than the previous year on events. Uh, we produced a hundred and sixteen meetings, uh, for a hundred and thirty-eight hours, and I was surprised to look at that, and there were, it was actually less meeting time than the year before, so, you're getting more efficient. Good.
Mr. Schomel's in charge of more meetings.
That must be it. We had, uh, we saw a drop-off in the number of DVDs checked out at the public library, just to let people know that those libraries, the, the library is there, we have all the public meetings available on DVD, you can check out for free at the library, uh, in case you don't get cable at home, uh, in which case you're probably not listening to this now, but you can tell somebody to go through it. We also, though, and one of the reasons why those numbers may have dropped off from the previous year, is that we're also, uh, posting all of those meetings online now, and they're also on YouTube now. Well, we have a YouTube channel, and, and, uh, people will start catching on, we just started that, and, uh, so it's available, um, all the time, available online. So, and, uh, I've got a lot of information in there, if you had a chance to look through it at all, you have any questions about it?
Oh, I have a comment.
Okay.
I was at John's studio the other day, and it's really looking nice. The mill, mill paint was.
Oh, yeah, I was a little strong that day.
Yeah, it was.
Finishing up, uh, the, uh, Carnival's big set. Thanks.
I'd like to get the expenses, John. Total expenses, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, but almost forty thousand of that was for some new equipment, I know, which.
We had two additional appropriations last year. Uh, one was, of course, for the van that we just approved, that was on last year, and, uh, the other was, uh, the cameras, we just purchased those, about thirty, was it, thirty-nine thousand here, six-thirteen? Yeah.
As we often say, it's not tax money, it's the fees paid by the cable subscribers at Finance TV Three.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. We have an appointment to the redevelopment commission. Dr. Weber?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, open it up for nominations to the redevelopment commission. I don't have a hammer, so I just.
Do we have any candidates?
Yes, we do, and, uh, you got his name.
I don't have his name. Well, you mentioned to me, but I've spaced it.
I had it here, but where I wrote it now, Gabe is the one that found it.
Yeah, Gabe. Something written down, so.
Yeah, here it is. Who are you, Sharp? Terry Sturgeon. Lives on Grand Avenue, across from the library.
Okay, Larry, Larry Sturgeon?
Terry Stur, no, wait a minute, I got the wrong one.
We'll nominate him, too.
No, Terry is gonna go on the, uh, HPC. No, that's not right. Help me, help me, help me.
Well, let's just nominate the guy who said, we'll come up with a name later.
Melissa, help me, come on.
McQueen's on HPC, so is Terry Sturgeon owned?
Is McQueen the one that's going on HPC? What's her first name?
Shannon, I'm sure. Is on your, take your.
I can't find it. Mike Stevens. I got Mike Stevens.
Oh, Mike, I gotta go to the back, to your HPC sheet. It's in the back.
Come here and show me. Well, in the meantime, Terry Stevens is going to be nominated for the redevelopment commission.
Okay, Terry Stevens, sorry.
Fill that out, and Sharon McQueen will go on HPC, uh, Historic Preservation Committee. Those are appointments that I make and you make the other, but you need to vote on this one, Terry Sturgeon.
Terry, Terry Sturgeon, okay, so, any other nominations? Any nominations be closed?
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, closed.
Okay.
Congratulations, Terry Stevens.
So we got everything, oh, Stevens.
Stevens, Melissa.
On the, uh, Tourism Committee, I'm reappointing Mike Stevens for a two-year term. That fills that. Sorry, we got paper all over our place here tonight. Okay, I got one other item we gotta do tonight.
We have two other items.
We do, we have two other items. The one I wanna do is ordinance sixty, pending ordinance twenty-nine ninety-two, this ordinance accepts the street contract for four years. The Board of Works has already acted on this. Uh, you've had it in your hands, the red letters in there were the changes, I hope you all read it. Uh, any questions?
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Say it. Go ahead.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to accept the, uh, street contract. Uh, there's some highlighted changes in there, did, any comments? Fran?
No, I, it was explained at the Board of Works meeting, what, uh, what was occurring, we're allowed to have part-time people with, uh, no restrictions, and, uh, nine dollars an hour. Um, I think there were, what, a few concessions by the city, and we increased, uh, the health insurance to thirty-five thousand, fifty thousand.
Your life, yeah.
Life insurance. Um, you mentioned some other ones.
Yeah, we're allowed to have, uh, what do you call them, I almost forget what they call you, group leaders? Anytime we want to, we can have for six months, three months, a year, and we can pick them whenever we want to. Basically, we're giving them forty cents per hour increase if they have a Class A CDL, and twenty-five cents an hour if they have a Class B CDL, and they've got one year to get it, at the end of the year, it's over. Uh, some of them already have it, they'll be grandfathered and start getting that paid. That total will be, if everybody went for the Class A over ten years, they got a forty cent raise per hour, over ten years. So I don't think the taxpayer can say we're extravagant. We followed in line what we did for police, fire, EMS, that if you gets, if you get something, you know, you educate yourself, we'll give you a little something.
Mr. Mayor, did you do an incentive program for the automated driver?
Yes.
Good.
And it's in here, it runs from thirty to ninety cents, and it's to be, uh, decided by the Board of Works.
Okay.
That was in the original, uh, ordinance.
But he has to almost pick up a thousand of those toters a day.
Right, right, that's, that's gonna be.
Before it becomes a point.
We're gonna go through a three-month training period before we even decide how to do that.
Okay.
So I, I, I have a motion on the floor to accept this ordinance, accepting this agreement. Roll call, though.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
You have, uh, selected that, we have a form yet, okay. Um, would you like to suspend the rules?
To move.
Second.
On suspension of rules on pending ordinance twenty-nine ninety-two, an ordinance that accepts the street contract for the next four years, on suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Move on?
To move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to move to third and final reading on the street contract ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, though.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
I'm sorry, was that me?
Yes.
You called.
Yes. Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Okay, you have passed that on third and final reading, that gets out, and.
Mr. Mayor?
Misses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the negotiation, did you and John represent the civic?
We did.
Thank you very much.
And we signed up.
I know it was a long time, and, and you had to.
John estimated a hundred hours, did you say, John?
Uh, yeah, uh, two, uh, two, uh, two hours per week for fifty weeks.
Yeah. Okay. You had pending ordinance twenty-nine ninety-one in your packet? I think it was in the packet. Or was it passed out? Are you familiar with it? It's a traffic code change for over around Stance and Blower Company, and what I wanna do tonight is, I wanna pass it on first reading and then let it sit. I'll give it to the newspapers who can put it in the paper, because it's a lot of traffic changes over in that area. Now, how did this come about? We met Pete and I with all the major companies over in the old industrial park. They said, we need help. People speed down between the two buildings, around here and around there, trying to beat people downtown, rather than take Western Avenue where the stoplights are. And they said, we're going up there with a high-low, and maybe we've got a big, uh,